I'm going to call the meeting to order if we could rise for the Pledge of Elegions, please.
Pledge of Elegions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I say we're going to move to public commentary, and I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight, for your interest and for your interest in addressing the board. This is your opportunity to address the board. The board will listen to your statements, questions, or concerns. We will not have a conversation, but if follow-up is necessary, a member of the superintendent staff or board member will get back with you. You have three minutes to address the board. Please keep an eye on the timer on the wall over there. If you come close to your time, Mr. Siegler will let you know that your time is coming close, and if you would please wrap up your comments. We ask that all speakers remain professional and refrain, goodness, from personal attacks. I should not have had the chalk before we started the meeting. We are going to start with Deb Terry.
I'm Deb Terry. I am an English teacher at Wild Lake Northern, and I'm entering my 25th year, so pretty excited to get started. I went to, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the WLEA, and we want to welcome Dr. Lons and Mr. Hamka and all the new members. We're very excited to work with all of you and as we move forward together with all the changes in our district. Dr. Lons, I want to thank you on behalf of the WLA for your opening day presence. We really enjoyed your comments and what you shared, and aside from hearing over and over how tall you are, the word that stood out the most yesterday that we heard over and over is loyalty. And I just want to take the time to thank you. It's something that came up often, is that you are loyal to Wild Lake, and as you were speaking to the group, that means a lot, because even as you're saying that, you know, you know that there's people here who have been here a long time, and that you listen to our voices and you want to, you want to take our, how we feel and what we think into consideration, so thank you for that. To all the school board members, I want to say thank you, new and those who have been on the board a long time, and we're looking forward to a great school year. We want to say thank you to the board members who have been very visible and present, both at the opening day events and all of the events at the different schools. It has been noted, and it's very appreciated, that you are there for the kids, for the staff, for the families, for Wild Lake, so thank you. We want to welcome Mr. Lipit and Ms. Crafton. Thank you, newest members, for joining us and putting in your time. We all know that this is not your day job, and that you spend a lot of time and you're very committed, and we appreciate it. And, and I think that's it for tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Black.
Thank you for letting us speak. I'm Michelle Black. I am the ELA and Social Studies Coordinator for Wild Lake, starting, I think, my 27th year. Very proud Wild Lake educator. I wanted to take a few minutes to just brag about our teachers a little bit. Summers are for lots of recharging and getting yourselves ready for the next year, but we have a lot of teachers who are really dedicated to their learning over the summer. And last week, we had our Homegrown Institute. This was our sixth Homegrown Institute partnering with Advancing Literacy at Teachers College at Columbia. And this year, we had 75 K-5 teachers and some special ed teachers attending for four full days of their summer last week. The last full week they had off, they were with me. They were learning about the latest research and high leverage strategies to support their students in literacy. And this year, we had three strands. We had a new teacher strand, because last year, we had an enormous number of new elementary teachers. And at the new teacher strand, they learned the latest research around reading, writing, phonics, spelling, and grammar, and how to incorporate that important work into their classrooms. We had a K-2 strand that was focused on writing and phonics, and a 3-5 strand that was focused on writing, grammar, and spelling. And at the unit, at the sessions, the teachers got a preview of the units that are actually on the consent agenda tonight, and they were very excited about the new units and the changes that are in the units about how to really reach our kids based on research, including spelling and grammar lessons, and important shifts in the instruction that we know that we need for our students. The feedback, as usual, for the Homegrown was incredible. Every teacher felt these four days of learning will make a high impact on their daily instruction, and I just wanted to share some of the words that they shared with me. One teacher said, "I've attended Homegrown for three years now, and every year is better than the last. I always leave inspired and prepared to help my students become proficient readers and writers. The updated writing units that we were able to preview incorporate new material with a much-needed focus on grammar and spelling. I know my students would be far more engaged in writing this year, and I will be so grateful for that." Another teacher said, "Homegrown was truly an incredible experience. It was filled with helpful teaching tips surrounding record-keeping, small group instruction, the use of mentor texts, and so much more. Some of my greatest takeaways were simple management techniques and tricks to reach reluctant writers. It was an awesome four days of growth and learning, and I loved it." A research room teacher said, "As a resource program teacher hired in 2023, it was so helpful to take the new teacher training. I'll better be able to support my students in their gen ed classrooms and make my specially-designed instruction even more relevant for them." And one more I wanted to share. "I've had the good fortune to attend several Homegrown Institutes in Wild Lake. I always learn new strategies based on research, new content, and confirming information that engages learners and ultimately leads to literacy success for all. Also, the collaborative nature of the institute allows me to interact with colleagues from across the district, which is always a great opportunity." I just want to commend those teachers, four days of your summer in August, to learn and grow and to be collegial and work with your colleagues is really something to be proud of, and as usual, our teachers are amazing, so thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kubik.
I'm Kathy Kubik, excuse me. Thirty-seven years in the district, 26 working for you as a para pro in special ed. I love the students. It was wonderful. The reason I, again, come to another school board meeting is to point out that to taxpayers, hopefully you're listening taxpayers, to wake them up. Why did you have to have in May an election for a $250 million bond that cost the district about $300,000? The clerks of the eight or nine cities that make up the district wished you had waited for one of the three other elections this year, but no, it had to be in May. Now you come for a simple little $33 million renewal. It was approved in 2014, the first time. But again, the district wants a renewal, more money. It's never for students, as they always claim. I quote from Mr. Lons, "The upcoming village replacement is critical to maintaining the high-quality education that Wild Lake Schools is known for." Then I, my question, then why do the scores not show that? Again, the quote, "Approval of this proposal ensures that we continue to provide our students with the resources and support they need to succeed." Then why aren't they? Revenue is you, this revenue is used on operating expenses, facilities, maintenance, and staff compensation. How much is enough? I never know, because in Wild Lake, well, it's never, it never does tell where the taxpayers, where it is used completely. Because they, we are now in debt over $600 million, and is that just to build schools? Because pretty schools do not make the child a better learner. I just think that I, I'm trying to wake up taxpayers, please pay attention to what goes on in this school district, and they don't, and you just keep asking for more. And there's a school board member that's probably said yes to every single one that we still owe, and I am just disappointed. Thank you. They never think of taxpayers. Taxpayers, wake up. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Van Loon.
Good evening, and I would first like to wish everyone a wonderful new school year. There's always a lot of angst and anxiety, and I really, truly, I saw a bunch of teachers today, and they were really on the road and excited to go, so I'm looking forward to that. Today, I saw something disturbing on Facebook. It was a post by a school board member, a sitting school board member criticizing district leaders for getting political at staff meetings, and criticizing board members for going to school specific events without communicating with the board. They were accusations that were hurled at the school board members without names, without backing. I find using Facebook for such accusations inappropriate. I think whatever the accusations happen to be, that those should be dealt with privately. Those are not something for public display, especially when it's not backed up by any facts. So I found that extremely disappointing. My first intention to coming and speaking today was to talk about the election coming up, the school board election. We obviously have two distinct groups running. One group consists of three currently sitting board members, and another previous board member who is running again. The other group consists of four people who have not had any kind of board experience, and from what I am gleaning, very little district-wide experience, either through commitment or involvement in various committees and activities around the district. I really think it's important, as this election moves along, that we are civil about it, but also that the, the community, those voting, inform themselves and learn why these people are here. I felt that some of them are here for a single purpose, and that's not why you run for a school board. You don't run because you have an agenda. You run because you care about what's happening in Wild Lake, and you care about the students, and you want to do what's best for them. I feel that the slate of our current board members has that. I'm not sure about those running. I don't know them well enough at this point. I hope to hear what their commitment is beyond a single commitment, a vendetta, or an anxiety or an anxiousness to get themselves involved in the minutia of the district, which really is a school board problem, or school board position. So, thank you very much. Have a great year, everyone.
Thank you. Lisa West.
Welcome back, and I hope you really enjoyed your summer. I am running for the four-year term, and I'm excited about running. I've had plenty of experience with being on the band rep, and I was at a music board booster meeting last night, and it was quite interesting, actually, having a conversation with the parents, and there were some current concerns that came up, some that couldn't attend the meeting tonight, so I thought I'd tell them I'm coming anyways, so I will go ahead and bring it to the board's attention. So, many of the high school parents, I know this doesn't really apply to elementary and middle school, because they don't get the fees that we get, but for the high school, we get a lot of fees beginning of the school year. The joke is, bring a checkbook. We get that. It happens. But there seemed to be a lot of extra links, and a lot of different places we had to go to pay different things this year. So rather than going into one place for e-funds, there was a link for the homecoming tickets, there was a link for the homecoming shirts, there was another link for the athletic pass, and it just seemed like there was a lot of extras, which added up to a lot of extra inconvenience fees, or as somebody liked to say, inconvenience fees, because nobody wants to pay those. But the athletic pass was a particular concern for a lot of the band parents, because they also have kids in many other sports, and they're excited to go and celebrate their students. Unfortunately, it seemed like there was an issue, because there, first of all, you can only have up to five members in a family, and we have families that have six or seven kids, and so if you have, or like six or seven people in the family, well, if you can only have five, that leads us to another issue, that they have to pay extra, or have to figure out how they can get extra passes for their family. There was also an issue that some of these children don't have phones yet, so if you, you can only get the athletic pass via a phone, and it can't be shared amongst the parent's phone, so whichever parent happens to be bringing that child that night, they then have to figure out how they're going to go ahead and use that pass. So there's an issue with transferring, a transfer of that pass. There's also concern, because people have seen this in other districts where the Wi-Fi has been down, and this has not, and this particular system has not worked. So there's multiple concerns about these, this particular issue, also that it's gone up quite a bit, and the convenience fee is much more than in a neighboring district of Huron Valley. I'm not sure what Huron Valley is paying right now for a convenience fee, or charging for convenience fees, but we do pay more. So I think it'd be nice to go back to just the paper passes, or have the option of doing the digital pass. I don't think that's a bad option, everybody's, most people are carrying their phones nowadays, but there are days that I forget my phone at home, which I kind of like, but I'd like to go ahead and consider that for the future, so please go back to the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Barons.
Members of the school board, Dr. Lons and cabinet members, thank you for the privilege of addressing you this evening. My name is Dr. Rebecca Barons, and I have lived in the school district for over two decades, and have treated many residents and students in my practice as an emergency physician at Huron Valley Hospital. I have been attending school board meetings for about two years now. It has been a wonderful experience for me to have many discussions with teachers, students, and parents in our school district. It is so inspiring to talk to teachers who love kids and love the subject matter they are teaching. It gives me much hope for the future to talk to kids who really love learning and are excited for what the future holds for them. It is wonderful to see parents who are so devoted to their kids and sacrifice much for them. In order for this to continue, it is important that teachers be given the support, resources, and the respect that they need. They often supplement from their own income the additional materials they need in their classrooms. In fact, I read of a recent survey from the Association of American Educators. They stated that 97% of American teachers spend an average of $673 per school year for classroom supplies. Another survey from Adopt a Classroom said an even higher amount was spent, $860 a year. I talked to a young teacher recently, who said she needed filing organizers, but could not afford them. I invited her to my home and donated them to her. She was so excited to receive this. Surely, there must be solutions that need to be proposed to address this to help our teachers. I am concerned about teachers also struggling with classroom discipline. The home is where basic values such as respect, kindness, courtesy, the saying of please and thank you, needs to be instilled in children. We can't expect teachers to wave a magic wand to achieve classroom discipline. They have enough to deal with. I have also had conversations with parents whose kids struggle with literacy. As you know, literacy has been an issue I've been concerned about for some time. These parents have to hire private tutors, which they are struggling to afford. One parent said to me, and I quote her, she said, "I questioned whether the reading curriculum was sufficient, and I was made to feel like I was a bad person for questioning their authority in the school district." Surely, there are solutions to the problem of literacy, and this needs to be addressed. Progress has been made, and I appreciate it, by our talented educators, but I believe much more needs to be done, and we need to make sure they have the resources to accomplish this. Now, besides these issues and many others, which are important to me, I am running for election to the Wild Lake School Board. Now let me conclude with this quote. "A love of learning is a seed that, when planted in a child, grows a forest of knowledge. Teaching a lesson lasts but a minute; instilling a love of learning lasts forever. And may our students have a wonderful new school year." Thank you.
Thank you. And I really hope I don't mess up the next name, but Jaclyn Sobcheck?
No, we're not.
If you can say it when you get to the podium, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I am a parent at Commerce Elementary. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, because I can't believe I'm here to talk about the issue, but we have a classroom for fourth graders that is a third of this with 31 students. It's a real problem. We have, we went from 21 students with three sections, with four sections, now we're at three, four, or three sections. So we have 30, 30, and 31 students in our fourth grade class. It's also for our third graders, and it's also for our fifth graders. I don't know what happened. We have empty classrooms. We are getting a road paved in front of our building. I don't know if it's funds. I wasn't, nor were any of the parents included in what's going on. I asked about class sizes in June, July, August, because people were talking about class sizes, and I said, "It's not going to happen. They're not going to put 30 students in one classroom." Your collective bargaining agreement states that anything over 28 is not desirable. So we went from three more-than-desirable class sizes to now, or we went from four, now to three. So my student is sitting in a classroom with a lovely teacher. The teachers are amazing, but she has 31 students to deal with. I have a lot of these kids often at my house. I don't know how she's going to do it. And to have a good year, and no one's giving me an answer. Why is it like this? Is it money? Do we need to pay more money? That's fine, too. What is the answer? I've emailed many of the people sitting at these, at this desk, at your desk, and I don't have an answer. I need to know why my student is with 30, my son is with 31 students. He's sharing a locker. He's, he's sitting here. She has to move books out to the, outside of the classroom, and she's bringing parents in to help. Parents are great to help. I work outside the home, and I just don't understand how she's going to have a good year. I know she will, because all of our teachers are amazing, but I need answers of why it happened this year, how we can do it differently next year, and if there's a potential of solving the issue that is in front of us. So I hope that you visit Commerce Elementary and see what's going on, because we have third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade with three sections and 30 to 31 students. And I didn't meet a para tonight at our meet and greet. I'm only sitting with our teacher, who doesn't deserve this, and nor does my student. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Sawmiller.
Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. My pronouns are he, him, and his. I'm repeating remarks I delivered here last year regarding school libraries. Certain books complained about, to this board, may not be suitable for elementary or even middle school readers, but that does not make them pornography. These books are not categorized as pornography, because they do not predominantly appeal to prurient interests, and they have serious artistic and literary value. Public schools are by definition public, and they are secular. Like it or not, they are a microcosm of society. There is a wide variety of ethnicities, religions, cultures, and lifestyles out in the real world, and public schools are the real world, and public schools will have the same variety. Parents' desire to raise their children as they see fit is naturally their right, but that right does not imply a right of control to over what others see, hear, and do. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the right to freedom of expression, and that right encompasses intellectual freedom, which includes an individual's right to receive information on a wide range of topics and from a variety of viewpoints. Libraries play an important role in facilitating that free and open access to information. There is a reason that amendment is number one. Now I have learned that in spite of assurances from some sitting board members, the Wild Lake Schools have not banned any books. I am aware of at least 10 books, possibly more, that have been removed from school libraries for review. I would like to know which books those are, and exactly who is doing this review. Removing them for review has the same effect as banning them, and this so-called review has been going on for months, as I understand it. I would appreciate an answer from the administration to these questions at your earliest convenience. I hesitate to start dealing with FOIA requests, because I don't want to become part of the obstruction of public education that is already being pursued by local followers of the great schools initiatives, who are abusing the FOIA process in this district. That obstruction is right out of the playbook of Moms for Liberty, an organization heavily involved in developing Project 2025, a blueprint with objectives aimed directly at destroying public education. These people, along with some sitting board members who like to talk about collaboration, support a slate of school board candidates who want to fulfill those objectives. I find that to be absolutely frightening and appalling. I urge this board and all of those listening to defend public education vigorously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Wise.
Mike Wise, 23-year resident of Commerce Township. Crafton, Lipit, Siegler, Smith, C-L-S-S. Remember the first letters of their last names, C-L-S-S. These are the four candidates we want to vote for for Wild Lake School Board on November 5th. There are a total of eight candidates that are running. I will not mention the names of the other four. Again, the four names that we should remember and vote for are Crafton, Lipit, Siegler, Smith, C-L-S-S. The other four are financially backed by the book banners called Moms for Liberty and a billionaire in the Grand Rapids area. Her name is Betsy DeVos. DeVos has never attended a public elementary or high school. In 2019, Forbes lists her and her family at a net worth of at least $2 billion. We don't want the Wild Lake Schools run and influenced by billionaires like Betsy DeVos and book banners like Moms for Liberty. Again, we need you to vote for C-L-S-S. Crafton, Lipit, Siegler, and Smith. The four anti-public education candidate, candidates I have not mentioned, want to weaken education in Wild Lake and in Michigan in general, just like similar people are trying to do in Louisiana, Mississippi, Texas, Florida, and several other states. The four anti- The four anti-public education candidates are in favor of book banning. They want to rewrite U.S. history books. They want to ban student-free speech. They wanted to hurt Wall Lake Public School funding and your tax dollars to charter schools in order to fund and support already wealthy people like billionaires like Betsy DeVos. They want to end head start in early childhood programs that give little ones a jump start on kindergarten. There is a concerted effort to take over Michigan public schools, specifically focusing on Wall Lake, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, Farmington, Huron Valley, Lake Orion, Novi, Rochester, Troy, and Waterford. Remember the four letters. Vote for CLSS, Crafton, Lippett, Sigler, Smith. These four candidates are committed to ensuring every child in Wall Lake Schools receives a quality education in a safe and nurturing environment that allows them to thrive. Vote on November 5th. Please go to their website by Googling Class, the number four, WallLake.com. You can also find them on Facebook at Class, the number four, at Wall Lake. Please mark your calendars for the next two Wednesdays for a meet and greet with Crafton, Lippett, Sigler, and Smith. Wednesday, August 28th, and Wednesday, September 4th. Both meetings are from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Commerce Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Titus.
Good evening, and welcome back. I'm Christine Titus. I'm a 32-year resident of Commerce Township, and I'm starting my 19th year in education at Hickory Woods Elementary as an instructional specialist. So, I'd like to hand out some thank yous tonight, first to Mrs. Kohansky, Michelle Black, Ellen McDonald, Kelly Iverson, and the group of dedicated educators and support staff that gave up some of their summer to support student learning through our various summer initiatives of Sunshine Academy, the ESL Summer School, the Summer Success Programs. And then there was some virtual online work as well, Credit Recovery, all those folks that give up their time to help support the learners in our district. Mrs. Black also talked about Homegrown Institute, and I was privileged to be a part of that opportunity as well, where we get some really good professional development on our current ELA curriculum. So, I really appreciate that opportunity. Let's see. And finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Lons and the organizers of yesterday's opening day event. George Karros was engaging and motivating to get our year started off. However, I think my favorite part of opening day is the alumni panel. For a lot of us, we have proud teacher moments when we hear these young people speak so eloquently and articulately about their time in Wild Lake. And I'm, I'm on social media. A lot of my friends and colleagues are those that I interact with, and just to see some of those responses of being shouting, you know, having one of those students shout out to you is, is really impactful and gives us that feeling that we really are making a difference in these kids' lives. So, thank you for that event. It truly is a point of pride of being a teacher here in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Smith?
My name is Michael Smith, longtime resident of White Lake Township, past board member and current candidate for the two-year partial term. I'm a proud alumni myself of the Wall Lake School System and a fellow parent to incoming 5th and 7th graders at Dublin and CHS. I wanted to take a moment to welcome back everyone this school year, and thank you for putting on great meet and greets. I just went to Dublin's, and it was wonderful. And CHS is earlier this week. It really goes to show you what, what you can put forth and seeing all the excitement in the, in the kids that we see there. You know, recently, I read a quote that said, "You don't have to be great to start, but you have to start to be great." And here we are at the start of the school year. And so, I want to welcome the board members, new teachers, seasoned vets, and new administrators, and praise you for the work at this start of making it great this year. Welcome to the fresh-faced and new kindergarteners, as I saw at Dublin today. I saw their excitement of realizing that they're going to make and meet new friends there, and it was just wonderful to see, as now my son is the oldest there. So, it was a little different to see that. So, it was really exciting to see that. Remind the students to make the most of this year, step out of your comfort zone, and support each other this year. We are all a community here, and you've got this, and it's also okay to be a little nervous. I know I am for my own kids as a parent. So, I want to say to the parents and special guardians of our students, join the PTA. I just did that again today, re-upped that membership. Talk to your kids' teachers this year. Make eye contact with the person helping at drop-off and pickup. Say hi to the bus drivers, janitors, the paraeducators, and the secretaries. You know, you don't have to volunteer or make any promises, or come to board meetings each month to be an active and caring partner in this district. We all lead busy lives, and just because you aren't here every meeting doesn't mean you don't care, or that you aren't paying attention. We know, appreciate, and see all of the work you do and can do in the schools and the PTAs. But what I do ask of all is, as I ask of myself, is that to be a supportive member of your child's school community, you have to put forth some effort and be present, and be knowledgeable on what's going on. Say hi to other fellow parents, wave to the principal, and show up on curriculum night and read about what's happening at these meetings, and listen to the teachers. It matters. Words matter, and your presence makes a huge difference for everyone. A new school year means new beginnings, new adventures, new friendships, and new challenges. The slate is clean, and anything can happen, so give a little grace and patience to your kids and to yourselves over these next few months and weeks, as we navigate the journey together. So, be there for each other, be kind to one another. May your coffee be strong and plentiful, and your hearts and minds be open this year, because we know we're going to need it. Teachers, staff, administrators, thank you for all you do, day in and day out, for our students, and your continued dedication to this profession, even with all the outside noise that we hear. Remember, you are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think. Welcome back, everyone, and I hope this is truly a successful year. Thank you.
Thank you. And move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Lons?
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Kohansky, I'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lons. I did want to echo what one of our public commentators mentioned, and that is our summer school. So, we were really fortunate to have great Wall Lake educators who were working with students from K through 12 this year. And if you'll give me just a moment, I do have some numbers that I want to pull up and share with you. I didn't know Dr. Lons was going to call on me first, so. Sunshine Academy. So, that is for kindergarten through 5th grade students, kindergartners moving into 1st grade, and then 4th graders moving into 5th grade, and everybody in between. We had nearly 400 students in that program. We had those students spread across three schools, and we partnered with primetime care so that families could make the most of their summer school opportunities. If their students were in summer care, they were able to, to drop their kids off at summer care. The kids could attend Sunshine Academy with their teachers, and then head back down for the rest of the day and the rest of the fun with primetime care folks. So, we really appreciate that. We were able to focus on some really robust learning. Kids researched and wrote about passion projects in elementary, and I was lucky enough to get to visit those programs in all of the three buildings. And the kids were teaching me everything that they learned about animals and what animals like to eat, and really nicely done by our Learning Services team in terms of planning for that, but really highly executed by our great staff. So, I just want to thank those that worked those programs. In addition to that, we also had our ELD Summer School at those three locations, and so I don't have the specific numbers on ELD. I can get that for you, but we had quite a few of our students who needed that extra support this summer to continue with their multi-language learning and becoming more proficient as English speakers. So, that was wonderful. And also, we had, for the first time this year in a long time, we had an in-person middle school offering. We haven't done that in a while. Oftentimes, it's tough to get those middle schoolers. Once they walk out those doors in June, they're, they're ready to start summer. And sometimes, that age group finds it a little difficult to make it back through the doors, but we had 120 students attending our middle school programs at all four elementary, or all four middle schools, I'm sorry. We had an ELA class and a math class, and so the students were identified through, kind of looking at needs and, and kind of using that evidence to drive the work that we were doing with them. So, I want to thank them, first time in a long time, going back to an in-person middle school option. We also had 325 students across the district that participated in virtual learning, and we love offering that flexible option. Many of our families travel in the summer, and that's a great way for them to say, "We're up north for a week or two." Kids can still get their support and their tutoring from our fantastic Wall Lake teachers. And so, I'm excited to share that everything ended really successfully just the other week. And one of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to be taking a look at, how did we do working with those students? Where did they end in the spring? How are they, how are they coming back to us this fall? And we want to make sure that we continue to maintain that growth and, and help them so that they're having a really successful start to the school year. So, I wanted to thank the program coordinators and Learning Services. Thank you to the parents for being diligent about making sure your kiddos were ready every day, and thank you to our great staff for supporting them in those different programs. Also, Credit Recovery, sorry, almost 500 kids from our three high schools. I don't want to forget them, working on a variety of credit options, whether they were credit deficient and had to recover some credit, whether they were looking to advance in some credit. So, we really ran the gamut of credit offerings for our high schoolers, and we also had great high school staff that oversaw those and connected with families, connected with kids, as well as my team in Learning Services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin?
Thank you, Dr. Lons. I had a request for the community. I wanted to echo all of the good welcome backs and everything we've heard so far tonight, but with it being the first day of school coming up, we have the first day of school signs. We would certainly, on the Community Relations team, appreciate anyone on their first day, either for themselves as teachers or for their classrooms, kiddos on the front porch on the first day of school. Take those photos, send them to us in Community Relations, and we'll make sure we share them out to really make the first day of school a real celebration. So, just a bit of homework for everyone for coming up on Monday. Thank you, sir. Everyone likes homework before school starts. It's fantastic. Mr. Scaling?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Muir?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Amka?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Omer?
I actually would like to give a shout-out to our secretaries. We had some training last Friday, and the people that put it on were voluntary from our offices and from HR, from payroll, the business office, presenting to all the secretaries who were very, we appreciate, appreciate them being there, taking some time out of their busy schedules in the schools. We also had pupil accounting that was providing some enrollment information. All of those individuals that provided that training, as well as the school nurse provided AED CPR training during the lunchtime. It was a very G-M-PAC day. The technology department also provided some additional training, too. And Kelly Holbeck, she put a lot of thought into the offerings and tried to really accommodate a lot of those people that were a little tenuous about their technology and needed a little refresher. Those individuals, if you remember, are working throughout the full summer, trying to get things taken care of. The pupil accounting people are enrolling kids as fast as they possibly can, so have a little patience. And for those families that aren't enrolled yet, please make sure that you have your documentation ready so that we can get those students in school the first day. So, again, a shout-out to those support people that are working hard alongside of all of our other great staff.
Thank you, Ms. Omer. That was a, a great day. I had a chance to welcome everyone. I, I think you left out a really important part, though, and that is that they did a raffle. For every cabinet member, we'll do a half-day for the, the winning secretary. Now, that sounds like a great idea, until you realize that we don't know how to transfer phone calls. So, I apologize in advance to Central, because it'll be a train wreck when I'm there, but I'll do the very best that I can. I have a few, oh, good.
I did provide a disclaimer before the raffle. I said, you know, no promises on the quality of the work performed.
I'm guessing this will be a one-and-done, but we'll see how it goes. I'm always excited to be in the buildings. I have a few topics to, to share today. First of all, I, I was remiss in not acknowledging, acknowledging Ms. Byer's accomplishment. Over the past year, she's been taking courses through the Michigan School Business Officials, and she has satisfied the requirement of the Human Resource Specialist Certification. That is no easy task, and that's on top of what she's doing for her day job. And so, I, I want you, on behalf of myself, the board, and our staff, say congratulations for that accomplishment, and I know I'll pay for this tomorrow. So, it was worth it, though. I, I also want to thank the staff for opening day. It was great to see everybody. It was great to see the staff talking with each other, to see the camaraderie that was there. I appreciate the training that happened at Wall Lake Western. The Ms. Muir and her team worked with Michigan Department of Education and Oakland Schools. It was a required training. It was not training that we thought we needed to put forth immediately, but because of that requirement, Ms. Muir adjusted and put together the very best program in working with MDE and Oakland Schools, as it was their presentation. So, I just wanted to shout out and say thank you, and to your team, for working with them under what can be difficult situations. And I heard it was a well-attended event, because it was required, and so, it was fantastic. Opening day where I was at, which was at Northern, I thought it was a fantastic day. Mrs. Kaplan, Ms. Casgrain, thank you for your speeches and for welcoming our staff back. I know that they appreciated it. I would like to acknowledge Dan Durkin for organizing that day on the north side and making sure that it went smooth. Mr. Scaling for facilitating the roundtable. You did a fantastic job. I mean, in fairness, it was, those were pretty easy people, but you did a fantastic job anyway. I'm not going to take that away from you. And Kathy, thank you for introducing the speaker. He was, he was very appreciative that you'd actually seen him before. And for those of you that weren't there at opening day, Mrs. Kohansky talked about how she first met him playing ping pong 10 years ago at a PD that she was at and he was presenting at. So, it was a nice little connection there. I hope that everyone remembers the excitement from that day and continues that forward throughout the school year. It's going to be a fantastic school year, and I, I can't wait to get started. I'm so ready to have kids back in our district and see the buildings come alive. No, no, I, I am good with kids. Five, five is plenty. No, we're district kids, yes. Yeah, that's very, I gotta, careful where you pause. Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We're going to move on to board commentary, and tonight, we're going to start with Mrs. Levin.
Thank you. I'm curious to know how many exclamation points were in your speech yesterday.
I only get five, so zero.
Okay.
But I was excited.
Good. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there. I know a lot of board members were there, but I'm dealing with some family health issues. But I was able to be at Northern earlier this week and last week, and I want to applaud the administration there for the well-oiled machine that they have, that is registration and freshman SWAT day. It was great to be back, you know, in the building. My kids are happy to see their friends, but I'm equally happy to see mine. So, always a good day. I was a little disappointed to hear some feedback from some people who were in the audience at various staff meetings, both opening day and today, where politics just kept getting introduced. And, you know, I, I don't need to get into the specifics. People can, can talk to people that were there. They can read my post on Facebook, because it was my post that Nancy Van Luin referred to. I think that we all need to make an effort this year to really stay away from politics in our schools. Nobody wants it. It doesn't matter who you support, what you believe in. It doesn't matter what side you're on. The only side is students, and we all need to do a better job of supporting our students and supporting our teachers and staying away from the politics. Not only is it not the right place to handle it in school, there's laws that can be broken by bringing it up, and there's campaign finance violations that can be had by bringing things up. And frankly, if we have time to be politicking in schools, we're doing something wrong. There is so much to do throughout the day, throughout the week, throughout the year, that we really just need to focus on what is going to be best for our students. And so, I am committed to doing that. I'm committed to, you know, having my opinions. That doesn't make it politics, but I am committed to, while I'm here at the board table, focusing on what's best for our students. And so, I am excited for the school year, for all the teachers, for all the staff, for all the students, for my own family, to, to get going again in Wild Lake, and, and I'm excited for what this new year is going to bring. So, thank you, everybody. And, oh, by the way, Wall Lake Western looks amazing. If you, you all got to see it, all the staff got to see it yesterday, but it is truly an amazing sight. And although, yes, you know, students can learn anywhere, learning in an environment that is gorgeous is a bonus. So, well done for that, and I'm excited to see how that project wraps up, and I hope everybody has a great year.
Thank you. We're going to move over to Mrs. Crafton.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for a great beginning to the school year, and I'm really excited to see all the smiling students. I've spent a little bit of time already at Wild Lake Western and watching teachers get set up, and I'm helping a teacher get their classroom set up, and it's a lot of work, but there's so much enthusiasm, and it's really going to be a top-notch learning environment for kids. I also want to point out that the bond committee met, the bond committee of the board met, and spent a lot of time with Dr. Lons on getting more clear on the, the priorities of the 2024 bond- 2024 bond program. So I want to publicly thank him for producing the reports that I had suggested we might get one click deeper on, and I look forward to seeing continued reports like that. It was very, very helpful. I also spent some time with Mr. Lippett, Mr. Segler, and Mrs. Kaplan at a three-day training hosted by the MASB and knocked out a lot of three-hour sessions on various topics like school finance and school law. So I feel like I'm entering the school year well-prepared to serve the community well. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to you, Mr. Lippett.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple quick comments tonight. First, I do want to echo Wild Lake Western. If you guys haven't seen it yet, unbelievable. And one of the things I keep coming back to as I think about Wild Lake Western, I've had the opportunity to walk around and take the tour, was that last week? I think it was last week we did that, two weeks ago maybe, is how professional the environment is in the sense that it can acclimate these students to life outside and beyond their time in Wild Lake schools. And I just, I think it is an absolute model for the district, for the county, and for the state. I am thrilled to show this off to elected officials who are interested in seeing what's possible through our school district and through the forethought of what we've achieved here as a board and as a community. And it's just something to really be celebrated, and frankly, I'm a little envious of the young people who now get to benefit from that and of the teachers who get to teach in such an environment. So kudos to everybody involved, and I'm thrilled for the district. Second thing I want to say is I also had the unbelievable privilege to attend yesterday's opening day, which, this is my first one of those, and I'm surprised, Dr. Lons, that we have gotten thus far into the meeting without talking about your tallest leprechaun. Did you know, I don't know if you knew, that Dr. Lons is the tallest leprechaun according to members of his own family? So I thought that needed to be shared here publicly.
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate it.
Debarance for you.
It was a wonderful event, and, you know, I myself, Mrs. Titus, I'm very mad at you because you stole my thunder a little while ago because I, myself, like you, really drew value from the roundtable that Mr. Scaling put forth. And it was wonderful to see the individuality of the students who've gone through our district and the impact that teachers had uniquely to them, talking about individual teachers and how these people, beyond the academics of learning, what they need to learn coming out of here, but the real impact, the passion, and the ability for these teachers to inspire these young people and to help drive their, again, their time outside and beyond their time at Wild Lake. It makes me think of my own schooling and some of my own. All of us in this room probably have our favorite teachers, and that's, we probably all have that in common, but what's not in common is why they inspired you. And so getting the opportunity to hear that and to recognize the impact that teachers have, not just academically, but on the lives of our young people, is something to behold, and I want to thank everybody who was involved in that process. That's it, Madam President.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Hey, everyone. Well, so first of all, I echo everybody's excitement and nervousness for the start of a new school year. And so teachers, staff, we appreciate you, and that nervous excitement we share on your behalf. And there's this little bug up here, which is really annoying. And students, enjoy and embrace it. Everyone looks forward to this, and if you don't look forward to it right now, you will look back on it fondly and remember the butterflies in your stomach. I wanted to use my commentary time today to mention a couple of things. Mrs. Crafton was, mentioned the update from the bond committee, and I am so happy and thrilled that we have a bond committee that's looking at these bond things. I am hoping that the analysis and the information that the bond committee is going through, just like the policy committee, will be shared first and foremost with the rest of the board members because, as we all know, the committee can't make any decisions. They bring things forward. And I am still hoping, although many of you know we are, have voted the other last meeting to go forward with the owner's rep process without really having had any discussion about it, about some of the trade-offs, and I'm still anxious for that to happen. I'm rather doubtful it will since a majority of us passed that particular motion. I fully expect that it'll come forward with a negotiated contract, to pass or fail. But I would welcome and I would be absolutely thrilled and consider it part of my job as an elected official to this board, to get a chance not only to vote yes, or sound like a party pooper, and vote no, because I'm not able to discuss anything or add any influence, any conversation. You know, I hope that your committee, like ours, brings things forth. We go through a couple of readings, and so I'm excited that you guys did that diligence, and I'm looking forward to seeing it and being able to respond to it. The other thing that I just wanted to share, because as you go through tonight's agenda, you'll hear four motions, five spends for different subscriptions. It was before Dr. Lons' time, but we've heard promises that we would get kind of a comprehensive list of all of the subscriptions and tools and things and what their rotation is. It's a lot of money. Tonight, you will hear $350,000 worth of expenses on different subscriptions, and I can't help when I look at those items that get passed with a yes or no, without any ability to talk much about the spend on those versus the spend on other things. I have a hard time not thinking about conversations that the public brings forward about uniforms and fields, about overstaffed classrooms, and we're, I would, I long for the day when we're having a little bit more comprehensive conversation around the spends of money, not in isolation on a motion, but as actually trade-offs, like all of us have to do with our personal finances. And so, you know, I guess I'm hoping that when folks see or hear things that aren't a unanimous seven-zero vote for certain items, you think about what a no might mean. And no doesn't necessarily mean I don't trust teachers to pick books or materials. No. And no might mean there are other, there are trade-offs that haven't even been discussed. And so I wanted to tie that to this part instead of to any particular one item later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segler.
Again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Crafton, Mr. Lippett, and Mrs. Kaplan for joining, for being up at our retreat classes. It was amazing to see and work with districts from throughout the state and learn from each other and find out that we really are, to a great extent, leaders of the pack in a lot of things. I was fortunate enough to, besides the keynote, take five classes. I did feel sorry for Mr. Lippett and Mrs. Crafton because they did arrive late on Friday night, or Thursday night, rather, and then they pulled three sessions full on Friday. And I think one of the greatest comments that Mr. Lippett shared and just was, "My brain is dripping out of my ears." But that's how intense a lot of what we went through was, and I really do appreciate it and hope to bring some of that knowledge back to the board in the future. The opening day event, I've been to many, and Dr. Lons, I have to say, it was wonderful. Mr. Scaling, the student panel is something that I really love to hear because I think we all love to hear about the successes of our students and the impact of a specific teacher or teachers have had on them. And it's, as Mr. Durkin was telling me, that there was a student who mentioned a teacher. The teacher was there. The teacher met the student afterwards in the hall. And just the impact that that has on our teaching staff, on our teaching community, has got to be unbelievable. You know, we cherish our children, but we cherish knowing that we've had an impact on them, and thank you for doing that. Dr. Lons, you know, as Mr. Lippett said, the tallest leprechaun, I also will say, based on the picture that was on the screen, I do not want you on my volleyball or basketball team. So, but we'll let the staff worry about that during the course of the year. I've also had the opportunity of attending several opening events and our ice cream socials. Mrs. Archie was welcomed by her community last week. It was phenomenal to see the relationship she has already made and the relationship she was making with her parents and students the first evening. It was just fun to be there and look and listen. Today, Mr. Hess was kind enough to invite me over to Mary Helen Guest for the ice cream social, and it was very cute because one of the new teachers came up to Mr. Hess and asked him a question, and I couldn't help but just smile. And he looked at me and he goes, "I don't want any comments from you." And I, so she looked at me and she said, "What do you know?" I said, "Well, I remember Mr. Hess as a third-grade teacher, and there are some stories I could tell you, but I will wait." And she cornered me later, so Mr. Hess will be getting that one at a later date in time. But, you know, we're off to a new year. I am looking forward to the opportunities that this avails our district. As we talk about Western, I took pride in showing the video at our retreat to other school board members, and their first question is, "When are we going to host something or when can we come down?" So look forward for that and for that request. Thank you.
Mrs. Casagrande.
So one thing I wanted to mention is that we have school starting Monday, and we need to keep student safety in mind. So we have people getting on buses. We'll have buses slowing us down going to work perhaps, but please be patient. Please be careful around our buses, careful around our walkers, careful around our bikers. We don't have a lot of biking lanes around here. We try to make it as safe as possible. As an avid biker, I know sometimes I have to go on Oakley Park for a little bit as I bike to the library. Long and the short of it is, please be careful, keep our kids in mind, keep our bus drivers in mind, and our staff. We also have kids who are walking and crossing with crossing guards. Again, that's another thing. I just want to keep safety at the forefront. I was also at the tour of Western, and one thing I wanted to mention, though, is that what I really appreciate when I go in our different buildings is that we're seeing footprints of that everywhere. We're seeing the upgraded furniture, the learning spaces. When I was talking at opening day yesterday, I couldn't imagine, like, being at Dublin and being able to sit in one of those reading windows. I mean, how cool is that? And the teachers really said the kids appreciate that. But you, I don't, sorry, I don't, why my iPad's talking to me? Ignore it. I'm not an Apple person, so I'll try to turn that off. Long and the short of it is, is you go into, like, West, like, Central. I mean, Central is not one of our newer schools, but it's getting its upgraded furniture, right? I remember walking into Geisler, into the media center. I think that was maybe one of the first ones that got an upgraded media center. I mean, just the spaces and having that learning environment. Having had boys go through school, they sometimes like to move. They need a little more space. I'm not saying that girls don't, but I had a couple that really needed to move a lot. And having a wiggle chair, you know, is just an amazing thing that they didn't have. My youngest would stand up spontaneously in third grade, so the teacher put him in a place where he could stand up and nobody was behind him. But he, but if he'd had a wiggle chair, that probably would have been really, really helpful for him. I do want to talk also a little bit about the PTSA Council breakfast, the welcoming back of the PTAs, the leaders of our PTAs and PTSAs and our principals. That was a wonderful day to be able to sit and have a little bit of breakfast, but also some camaraderie and just see some of our newer administrators, some of our more seasoned ones, a little bit nervous about, "Oh, is my school going to be ready?" Oh, of course, you know, it will be, or we'll work around this or that. But just a lot of energy in the room and thank the PTAs and PTSAs for everything you do because we have true partnerships there. And the last thing I want to touch on is why, partially, I ended up sitting on this board. I started advocating for public education and for appropriate financing. Before I came to this meeting today, I was reiterating the conversation that I had with my dad years ago when Proposal A was coming forward. And I remember the conversation really distinctly. My dad said to me, "Well, you shouldn't even have a say in this. You don't even own property." I'm like, "But someday I will, and when's the last time you had a reduction in funds this drastic? And how long does it take to change the system for how we fund public education?" And even then, when I was in college and didn't own, you know, a property, I knew that there's got to be something wrong here. How can we take away this much money and things are funded differently? And why do I bring that up? So part of the reason that we're going out for an operating millage is tied to the way that we are funding schools per Proposal A. So the state believes that we are getting all of that money, and they take that 18 mils and they subtract it from our per pupil allowance. If we don't collect that, they subtract 18 mils. It's not a bond. It's an operating millage. So I just wanted to say that that is what is going to be on the ballot in November, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them. But thank you, and welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, it's been a very busy couple weeks since our last meeting. I first want to start with congratulating Mrs. Byer for your accomplishment. That's fantastic, so thank you for that. I want to say, I went up to the conference this past weekend, and we had our first keynote speaker was on Conflict to Conversation, was the title of the session that we attended. And coming out of that, one of the references that he gave during his speech was a book. I gave all the board members this book. It's not a coloring book. So they all get it. It's Seven Blind Mice by Ed Young. It's a story of seven little mice that all saw the same thing and came to a different conclusion of what that object was until they get to the end. And I don't want to ruin it for anybody, but it's kind of like boardwork. We all come in with our own opinions and our own ideas, but in the end, we're supposed to come together and to work on where we need to be. And that was basically the understanding of the book, and I thought I would share it with all the board members and thank them for being part of my Seven Blind Mice, including Dr. Lons, because it's the eight blind mice, actually. So we appreciate that. I do want to say I came to the new teacher orientation, and that was very eye-opening for me. I've welcomed our teachers. I've seen our teachers. When you walk into a room with, and not all of them, but 22-year-olds, 23-year-olds with big, bright eyes and huge smiles on their face, and I'm sitting there going, "Whew, give it a week." Let's, let me see if those big, bright eyes and those big smiles are going to be the same. But the energy and the enthusiasm just brings it all home as to why we're here, why they're here, and how exuberant and excited they are to be part of Wild Lake and to be stepping into a classroom. And so that event in itself was fantastic, and I wish all those new teachers that came through orientation a great first day on Monday. I also, all of our staff, a great first day on Monday, and I'm looking forward to it. And everybody, brace and let's begin. And before we move on to consent agenda, Dr. Lons wanted to add one other thing.
Thank you, and I apologize to Mrs. Crafton. Thank you so much for the stepping in for the foundation and talking about the foundation and all the good work the foundation does at opening day. It was on my notes, and I missed it, so I apologize. Thank you, Madam President.
You're very welcome. Now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes proposed for June 6, 2024, regular meeting, proposed June 10, 2024, special meeting, proposed June 20, 2024, special meeting, proposed July 24, 2024, special meeting, proposed August 8, 2024, special meeting. We've had a lot of meetings. I was going to say, we've had a lot of meetings. Personnel recommendations, our new hires, retirements and such, our financial reports for May 2024, disbursements in the amount of $19,99131, balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures on audit it and investment schedule, bid awards, pizza bid award for food services, special revenue fund, purchases under $50,000, Art of Education, university three-year renewal, $49,499 from the general fund, Learning Ally one-year renewal, $31,45396 from the general fund.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casagrande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
I just had to make the correction. I know there's no discussion, but item E1, it was just read wrong. I just wanted to go correctly into the minutes. $49,999, not $499. It was just, the number was right.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for the correction. Okay, we have all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven-zero. Now we are moving on to... Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, we are moving on to purchases over 50,000. Dr. Lons.
Turn it over to Mr. Scaly.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Tonight, we're asking that the Board approve a purchase of the Zero Eyes five-year subscription in the amount of $665,000, $552,500 coming from a state grant, and $112,500 coming from the general fund.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Zero Eyes five-year subscription for $665,000 with $112,500 from the general fund and $552,500 from the state awarded grant.
Discussion.
We need a support.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like energized tonight. Okay, we got a support. How about discussion? Mr. Seigler.
Just a comment. It's nice to see some award grants and acknowledge the fact that we are getting them.
And Mrs. Kaplan.
I was gonna say, Mrs.
Oh, go ahead.
Mrs. Levin.
Would it be possible, either Dr. Lons or Mr. Scaly, for one of you to describe for the community, so it's on record what this is?
So, I want to be careful in how I describe it because we typically don't talk about our security measures publicly so that people can get around it. What it is, is a system that, in its own way, will help identify if firearms are outside of our building or in certain areas within our building. Right? So, I apologize for not going into any more detail.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
Yeah, I just want, I understand the sensitivity of it. I just wanted to thank Dr. Lons for answering my questions that I had. I know we had talked about it before and to maybe just say here at the board table that when the time is right, I think it would be good to maybe have a session so that we could bring Mr. Lipit and Mrs. Crafton in so they could hear some of the things that they may not have the knowledge that we did. I know they were able to ask questions, but just wanted to kind of put that out there and, and thank you for answering the questions that I had.
I think I might have a question that I didn't think to ask before now, and please feel free to tell me if it's not appropriate, but I'm just wondering, since this is out of the state grants, thank you for all the efforts to get that funding and the general fund. Is there not any money, could, do we have to take money out of the general fund versus out of a security grant?
We could take it out of the security grant. The, the general fund is a placeholder, but all the security fund money has been allocated currently. That's why we did it out of the general fund.
Okay.
And if I may follow up, one thing that I'm, I'm very proud of is, is the work that the team did. This grant that we received, we received almost a third of the total money available for the state of Michigan, and it can only be used for this program. So, it's, it was really great work. They've been a great company to work with, but we're, we're very proud of the fact that we received a lion's share as a proportion for our district.
Any notes? I'm just gonna echo and say, you know, I appreciate that from our staff and our administration working so hard to get that for us in this district. So, I appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Lons.
Be happy to turn over. Mrs. Kwensky.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. I would like to bring forward to the board the updated writing units of study specifically for grades three through five from the Teachers College Advancing Literacy Unit at Columbia. One of the things that you heard during public commentary was that our teachers got some previews of these streamlined resources, is what I'll call them, and they were very, very excited about the opportunity to take a look and have the opportunity to use those. And so, I bring that forward for you. We are using state grants which filters through the general fund. Those state grants are specifically around K through five literacy. So, very restricted in terms of the use of those funds, but we can use them to help support this type of, of work. And so, I bring that forward to you.
Beat you to it.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of updated writing units of study for $78,348 from state grants dispersed through the general fund.
Support.
Discussion. Mrs. Levin.
So, I reached out to some teachers to ask them about this program and their thoughts, and I was pleased that Mrs. Black had acknowledged that in addition to writing, there will be a well-rounded support of grammar and spelling as well so that all of these needs are addressed. So, I'm glad that the team has done homework to kind of update things and that our upper elementary students will be able to benefit from this program as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Lons.
Right, back to Mr. Scaly.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Again, tonight, we're asking that the Board of Education approve the purchase of our Google for Education annual software license in the amount of $51,775 out of the general fund.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Google for Education one-year annual software license renewal for $54,751.50 from the general fund.
Support.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to administrative appointment. Dr. Lons.
Mr. Hamka.
Good evening. I'm excited to share that Jacinda Sumara has been selected to be the Executive Manager of Instructional Technology. Jacinda has over 20 years in education. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in, from Albion College, a Master's of Arts from the University of Detroit Mercy, and an Educational Specialist from Wayne State University. Experience in education technology, curriculum design and data analysis. She has a strong track record of blending logic and creativity to, to drive results. She possesses a proven ability to build and develop teams, create multi-channel educational strategies, and to manage complex problems. Outside of work, she is an avid runner, regularly participating in road races up to the marathon distance. She lives in Metro Detroit with her spouse, Joseph Mastin, and their dog, Maze.
Mr. Seigler.
I move. I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Jacinda Sumara as Executive Manager of Instructional Technology effective September 9, 2024.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations. Now, we're gonna move on to resolution, support of Protect Michigan Kids Bill Package. I'm gonna send it over to Ms. Levin.
Need your glasses? No, I need not my glasses, or I won't be able to see. I'll just read the, the resolution first. So, whereas tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable disease, disability, and death in Michigan. Tobacco kills more than 16,200 Michiganders annually, more than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. And whereas Michigan is one of 12 states that make up Tobacco Nation, where the smoking prevalence is higher compared to the rest of the country. Tobacco costs Michigan over $5.33 billion in healthcare expenditures and $11.5 billion in lost productivity each year. And whereas flavored tobacco increases youth usage. In 2023, 90.3% of high school students and 87.1% of middle school students who use e-cigarettes reported using flavored e-cigarettes. Youth who vape use the product because they come in flavors I like. Whereas historically, cigarette companies have disproportionately marketed menthol products in predominantly black communities by using culturally tailored advertising images and messages. 85% of African-American adult smokers use menthol products. This is three times the rate of menthol use among white adult smokers worsening tobacco-related health disparities. And whereas Michigan state law prohibits local governments from enacting policies that regulate the sale of tobacco and nicotine products and require tobacco retailer licensure, preventing local communities from protecting kids' health. And whereas Senate Bill 647 restores local control and repeals state law prohibiting local governments from enacting ordinances and regulations pertaining to the sale or licensure of tobacco products, allowing localities to pass stronger tobacco control measures. And whereas Senate Bill 648 proposes to establish a new tax on e-cigarettes and increase taxes on cigarettes and other tobacco products with revenue generated dedicated to tobacco prevention and cessation programs and enforcement of tax and smoke-free air laws, aligning with evidence-based strategies to reduce tobacco use, especially among youth. Almost done. And whereas Senate Bills 649 and 650 aim to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, including flavored e-cigarettes and menthol-flavored cigarettes, recognizing the significant role flavors play in driving tobacco-related inequities and youth initiation. And whereas Senate Bills 651 and 652 establishes a statewide tobacco retail licensing program, requiring all establishments selling nicotine or tobacco products to obtain a license, improving compliance with existing tobacco sales regulations and reducing youth initiation to nicotine. And whereas Senate Bills 653 and 654 repeal provisions in the Youth Tobacco Act that impose civil and criminal penalties on minors for purchasing, using, or possessing tobacco products. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education supports the Protect My Kids Bill Package, Senate Bills 647 through 654, and urges the Michigan Senate Committee on Regulator Affairs begin hearings on these bills as soon as possible.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented and read.
Second. Discussion?
Just one comment, as I, as I normally would rag on our friends in Lansing, realize that this took a lot of work, took a lot of rewrite. When you have eight combined resolution, or bills rolled into one, it, it took a lot of effort from a lot of people to get this done, and I just want to thank those responsible.
Mrs. Levin.
I know I've already said a lot, but these are gonna be my words. So, this one's important to me. I lost my own mother to cancer, and anytime we can do things to prevent children from going down the wrong path, I think that that's very important. Vaping is a huge problem. I know this mostly talks about tobacco because this was a pre-written thing, but we as a community need to do better to keep vapes out of our children's hands. They're, they're terrible for their health. They're terrible for their futures. They're terrible literally for our school buildings, right? Oh, no, teachers come and flush the vape down the toilet, and now all of a sudden, we gotta fix the toilet. So, we need to do better. We need to be aware of what our kids are doing. Although, it might be easy to give your kid your credit card and send them down to 7-Eleven to quote-unquote "get a Slurpee", understand that they're buying more than Slurpees. And we really need to be parents and not friends. We need to make sure that this ends. And what I'm really hoping follows from this is more than just a resolution, but actual actions by our schools, by our administrators to follow up to not just turn the other cheek, but to make sure our kids know the consequences for repeat offenses, use the legal system if we have to, but that's not gonna teach them the lesson. To really explain why this is a problem. When we were all kids, or when some of us were older than kids, we had the DARE program, right? Everybody remembers what it was, you know, keep your brain off drugs, the fried egg. Well, keep your lungs off popcorn lung from vaping. Like, we need to start a new initiative. We need to communicate with our children that this is not okay, and it starts with us. There are a lot of adults that vape, and our children, you know, follow our lead. And so, I'm very much in support of this. I'm thankful that the Board finally brought this forward and that everybody will hopefully be in support of it here in just a moment. Thank you.
Mr. Seigler.
One other thing, as Mrs. Levin did bring out, is the adults. Are we going to have signage at our football games and outdoor activities? Thank you.
Mrs. Fernandez. Missy Beatya.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you have kids of the age group that are interested in these sorts of things, there are also now new little mints that look like they might be icebreakers, and they're called CIN, and they're nicotine-based, and they give the kids a little nicotine buzz, and they're just as addictive as anything else. So, again, the wording was focused very much on tobacco, but if you weren't aware that that's the latest form of addicting yourself to nicotine, there's another one for you.
Madam President.
Mr. Lipit.
Yeah, so I, I am an enthusiastic advocate of this. I'm really thrilled, as I think the rest of the board members are, that this has come to pass. I just will say, on a personal level, you know, my wife, being a pediatrician, I hear about this literally every single day coming home, and, and what I hear about mostly is how nefarious the marketing is, how easy it is for people to be confused and led into these products and ultimately the addiction for it. So, the fact that the state now understands it, the fact that our district is going to take a hard stand against this, I think is a great first step, but I think we need to move this further along to prevent the kinds of marketing that are, as I said, nefarious. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
Historically, the PTAs and PTSAs in the past used to bring in speakers for parents to help them understand what might look like something, when you mentioned the mint, is actually something else, and things to be looking for. And, you know, in the past, it might have been, you know, you may think that this glue is nothing, but this is what kids are doing with it. We've seen, you know, over-the-counter prescriptions go behind the, the counter and having to show ID, et cetera, but it keeps changing. So, I truly believe and, and I hope that our PTAs and PTSAs will continue to help to educate the parents as well. And yes, sometimes our, our PTAs are advocating for funding. Sometimes our PTAs are advocating for a playground, but sometimes they're also educating on, on what's happening out there to help us because we can't always keep on top of it. So, shout out to that, but yes, I, I do support the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It was the loudest "aye" all night. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Board approval of Head Start. Dr. Lons.
Mrs. Kwensky.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. I have for you tonight the resolution of the board approval of our Head Start program. In accordance with the federal Head Start performance standards, the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education is the governing body of our program. In order to comply with all federal contract regulations, Wald Lake Schools Head Start is submitting the following item for school board approval, which tonight is the Head Start Budget Narrative for 2025, which accompanied your board packet this evening, and that letter kind of outlines that budget narrative looking forward into 2025 from our early childhood director, Mrs. Davy.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2025 Wald Lake Head Start Budget Narrative and be granted permission to pursue the early Head Start, Head Start Continuation Application.
Support.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Lons.
Mr. Scaly.
Thank you, sir. In, in 2022, Wald Lake Central and Western High Schools JV and Varsity Boys Ski Teams formed a unified team. Due to low participation at Wald Lake Northern and the inability of the Western Central Cooperative Team to fill the squad last year, Wald Lake Northern is requesting to join this cooperative program. This would create a single team represented in all three high schools. Both the Lakes Valley Conference and the MHSAA support this cooperative agreement. Without it, Wald Lake would likely face challenges in competing in the state tournament due, due to insufficient participation numbers. We ask, the administration asks that the Board of Education approve the cooperative team agreement for Wald Lake Central, Wald Lake Northern, Wald Lake Western Boys Ski Team.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the MHSAA Cooperative Team Application to combine Wald Lake Central, Northern, and Western High School Boys Varsity and Junior Varsity Ski Teams, beginning with the 2024-25 Athletic Season.
Support.
Discussion. I would like to say, you know, we've done this with lots of teams in the district, and I think it's a fantastic way for our students and our athletes to be able to contribute when a team may be going away because of participation. So, I appreciate the opportunity to allow all of our students to be able to join as one. And if you ask me, it builds camaraderie throughout all of our schools. And, you know, as Dr. Bernier used to say, we don't want to be a school district, we want, or we don't want to be a district of schools, we want to be a school district. So, I think that goes forth into doing that.
Madam President.
Mr. Lipit.
Just a quick question, Mr. Scaly. I didn't ask this before. The Cooperative Team, what is their, their nickname?
That's a good question.
It's a great question. You don't know.
The Wald Lake.
Unified Ski Team, I think is what it was. I don't know that they'll be changing.
Unified Ski Team, thank you.
Any else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Lons.
Just in your, in the board pack, you were made aware of some administrative changes with the interim positions that we have and moving some people around to better identify who is actually in that organizational chart.
Oakland County School Boards Association, OCSBA, D. Oakland County School Boards Association, OCSBA, dinner meeting. I'll read the motion. It says, I move that the Board of Education approve the attendance of Mrs. Kaplan, Mrs. Levin, and Mr. Segler at the Oakland County School Boards Association Dinner Meeting on Wednesday, September 18, 2024, and authorize payment of the registration fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And with that, we're going to be adjourned at 8:27. Thank you.